All right, we're ready to begin. Mr. Beekman.
Good evening. I guess I'm the secretary this evening as well. Thank you for appointing me.
You're welcome. We didn't even have to vote on it.
So we will call the meeting to order. It is 6:00 for this special meeting. And do I have a list? I have a list. Let's start with a roll call. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
James Bonanno.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor. Absent. Eric Calippo.
Here.
Daniel Mayo.
Here.
Juanita Barnes. Absent. Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Chairman Krzak.
Barbara Krzak is here.
Thank you.
Okay, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this Board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. If anyone has a cellphone, please silence your device during the duration of the meeting. And this meeting is being recorded by AP TV. Mr. Beekman, do we have the appropriate notice?
We do have the appropriate notice. I think there's only one housekeeping item that we're waiting on.
Yeah.
We're good with that? Okay. So, yes, I did review the notice. Property owners have been served for the special meeting this evening, as well as the publication in the paper. So we do have jurisdiction.
All right, great. So JLD Investment Group, come on up.
And Mr. Prisata, I think there was one issue that we need to address, and that's just confirmation of applicant versus owner of the property and who signed the documents as far as the application.
Sure.
Correct?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So the applicant for this application is JLD Investment Group, LLC. They are not the owners of the property. They're the contract purchasers. The owners of the property are Holy Spirit Church. Holy Spirit Church does have authorization to endorse this land use application. I believe it was circulated from another law firm, a statute that required that endorsement to be done by trustees. I want to point this forth to the intention that although it says for trustees, that is for any religious institution, but Roman Catholic churches are actually underneath Section 16, subsection 15. That governs Roman Catholic churches, which do not have the same requirement. And if the Board, and only if the Board wants them, we're happy to. I do have Mr. Michael Butler, who is the attorney for the Holy Spirit Church here, who can also apply. Just saying.
I think we should probably have that, just to have some, you know, additional testimony related to that. Are there any Board questions, though?
Is it a diocesan asset, the church?
Yes.
Is it owned by the diocese? So I, you know, I, to work for the Archdiocese of New York, I'm told that under canon law, the asset must be signed by the pastor, the finance council, the trustees of the church, the archbishop, and in certain cases, the Vatican as well.
So if I may, the actual breakdown itself, I'd like to call Mr. Butler up as my first witness, I guess.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Michael Butler.
Mr. Butler, before you start speaking, if you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And again, state your name for the record and spell your name as well, please.
Sure. My name is Michael Butler. Last name is spelled B-U-T-L-E-R. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Eckert, Siemens, Charon, and Malott. We're, our office is in Lawrence, New Jersey. I can give you a card if you want after I speak. I am an attorney, and I represent the Holy Spirit Church, Mother Mercy Parish, and the Diocese of Trenton. The contract for sale was authorized by the Diocese and the Mother Mercy Parish. This is an application, and the application was signed and authorized also.
Did we have the appropriate signatures, Mr. Beekman? Or is the testimony sufficient?
I, you know, I, I'm not the Archdiocese, so, you know, there's testimony before the Board. The Board has to take the credibility of that testimony and weigh it as to whether they have sufficient information, if there's any information here. I do want to say to the Board that when it comes to the applicant and the application, the applicant's situation is not the owner. And the applicant signed it. There's no, I don't think there's any objection that the applicant itself is an issue. The second thing I want you to be aware of, and I looked at the same statutes that Mr. Prisata just indicated, it's Title 16, which is our religious corporations. When it comes to the sale of the property, there are certain requirements. Signing contracts are a little less, there are some less requirements, and it only requires approval by the local church as opposed to the, to the Archdiocese or some of the other larger organizations. So in my opinion, based upon the testimony, I do believe that the proper person signed on behalf of the application, because we're not talking about the sale or transfer of the property, we're talking about the application this evening.
But should, but if there is, if, let's say that it is approved, then we could put it as a condition that the appropriate people have approved this?
Well, and I think to indicate as a resolution condition.
Right, as a resolution condition.
We can certainly request the documentation that further verifies that the representations that are made to the, to the Board are accurate.
Okay.
Just to clarify, when we talk about representations, do you mean representations that the appropriate authority granted the endorsement of a land use application, not the sale proceeds? Since this floor does not have jurisdiction on the sale of the property?
That is correct. That is correct.
Right.
The consent for the applicant to make this application on behalf of a property not owned by the applicant.
Okay.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So we're trying to figure out who's who, so we know everything. So on, May 27, 2022, Mountain View Developments paid Mr. Daniel W. Lincoln to do a report on the historical status of Holy Spirit Roman Catholic Church. It was received by the city on June 30, 2002. It was given to all the planning board members. Who the heck is Mountain View Developments?
Mountain View Developments is the parent company, and JLD Investment Group is a subsidiary of Mountain View.
So Mountain View and JLD are the same?
Same. It's these two gentlemen right here.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So clarification, saying the proper authorities gave the applicant the permission to make this application, but the proper authorities have not okayed the contract?
No, I have not said that. What I've said is, so just for clarification, when it comes to land use applications, you parties have to endorse it, right? One is the applicant themselves, and number two is a property owner giving consent on a land use application to move forward. The consent on a land use application was done by the Holy Spirit Church in the appropriate mannerism that's required. And that's what this gentleman over here, Mr. Law, has just testified to.
But you're not speaking as to the contract or the sale?
Well, that's not before this floor. The floor does not have jurisdiction to sell the property. I'm saying it most respectfully, which is saying specifically to the statute itself.
So the two endorses are JLD and the church?
Yes.
Correct. And that's both been done according to proper regulation?
Yes, sir.
And to be clear, it is clear that it is, I think, Father Miguel, if I remember correctly, who executed the ownership authorization. But what Mr. Butler just testified to was that not only is he authorized to do that, but there was a contract between the applicant and the church that was approved by the Archdiocese that further allowed Pastor Miguel or Father Miguel to execute the consent. Is that accurate?
Well, there's a contract for the sale of the property, yes. And that was signed by the bishop and authorized by the bishop for the sale of the property.
Okay. So can you fill us in on what is actually before the Board?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
So what's before this board here tonight is the proposed preliminary major subdivision application. As you guys have very well understood, this board does preliminary land use applications first, and then final land use application at a separate hearing now. So what's before this board tonight is just the preliminary major subdivision. What we're looking to do here tonight is to subdivide the existing lot into six parcels. Those six parcels, we intend on using for residential purposes. And when you look at the plans that we submitted before this board, you'll see that we put the building envelopes there to demonstrate that we have no issues proposing a single-family home on each one of the potential six proposed lots without triggering any type of variance relief. But again, what's before this board is not any type of improvements or anything like that. In fact, it's just a simple subdivision of the property from one lot into six lots, and that's it.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the six lots, isn't 15,000 the minimum size for residential lots? Donna.
Fine.
Donna. Isn't 15,000 square feet the minimum size for residential lots?
That, it's, yeah, I probably should. I'll swear both of you in. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? For your records, your names and your, what your appointments are for.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fitchner, board engineer.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So what's the minimum lot size?
In the R1 zone? It's 5,000 square feet.
5,000?
Yeah, 50 by 100.
And you'll hear from our engineer here tonight that the proposed lots themselves range from 7,000 square feet to 12,628 square feet.
Okay. And what I would like, if you don't mind, Mr. Beekman, is to kind of, it's very rare that we have to do major subdivisions. So can you fill us in as the Board as to what our responsibility is?
Sure. So one of the roles of a planning board is to review major subdivisions when they're permitted uses. In the R1 zone, obviously, single-family homes are permitted uses, so that's why the application is before this board this evening. A major subdivision is according to the local ordinance, and it's usually when it's a number of lots that are being created by one or a few individual lots. Basically, one or several smaller lots being subdivided into even smaller lots that are created to create a higher number of lots. So in this case, the applicant is proposing from one lot to put six new lots with residential development on here. The reason why it's preliminary is because the applicant has not come before the board with full-blown plans. There are a number of things that they have to do, a number of things that have been identified in the planning report, as well as the engineering report, that would be required as part of the final approval. But the way the statute works is we also have to consider all of that as part of any resolution if there's going to be an approval, so that when the applicant comes back, between, I should say, between the time of any decision here and any final subdivision application, the applicant is going to have to comply with certain requirements. So it's important for the Board to understand that this preliminary, any preliminary approval is also going to dictate, also dictate what's going to happen with a final subdivision approval.
So are we allowed to, you know, is it before us? Obviously, there must be, I assume, off-site or street parking. So, I mean, we're just dealing with the six lots, the outlines, you know, obviously, you know, there'd be driveways and stuff.
Well, here's what I would suggest is, why don't, unless there are any questions specifically related to the process, why don't you let the applicant proceed with their application? And like any other application, the Board members have the right to ask questions.
I just have one more question to what you had said. You said that the preliminary dictates final.
So if you, the conditions that are set forth in any preliminary subdivision resolution would dictate what the applicant has to do between any such approval and a final approval? And again, I'm not presuming the Board's going to approve anything. But if you're, any resolution that you do in a preliminary subdivision, major subdivision application, is going to have consequences with what happens when they come back for their final approval.
Okay, understood.
Okay. And before we, before we continue, also, I understand that there are some objectors, where there is an attorney for the objectors? We can? No, no, I'm just looking for process. Because once you do your presentation, do we have another presentation by objectors? Or how does this work?
Are you asking me this?
I'm asking you this.
I'm sorry. I mean, we're gonna, the Board's gonna go in the same process as any other application.
But we generally don't have an attorney that represents objectors, generally. Do we have one?
I don't know. We, the Board received a letter. My understanding is that attorney is not going to appear this evening.
Okay.
But, you know, let's place it on the record to make sure that there's no other attorneys appearing other than counsel for the applicant.
But that's what I'm looking for, is that who's, besides your witnesses, are there any other people that are going to be presenting that, like, objector attorneys?
Just the letter we mailed in. There's no other letters.
Okay, so all we have is...
Do you have additional presentation, people that are going to be presenting, or you're done?
No. I'm just showing that, but no.
Okay. All right. So as far as process is concerned, we do not have another attorney. We're going with your presentation. And, and we'll go through the normal process, just for the public, because we have more public than we normally have, is that after every witness, the public will be able to ask questions of that witness of whatever they, whatever they've testified to. So you will have an opportunity to ask them questions that they, that they testified for, which is normal.
I do want to caution one thing, that because of the statute, any applicant or any objector that is a corporation, or an LLC, or some type of an entity, not an individual, has to be represented by counsel. So I want to make sure that that's clear on the record, that they're required to be represented by counsel unless they have some other interest in the application other than the fact that they're associated with a corporation, or an LLC, or some other entity.
Okay, let's go. Unless we, unless somebody else has any other questions, process? We're good? All right, let's go.
All right. So as stated before, what we're here seeking to do is we're looking to propose a subdivision from a single lot into six parcels, which require demolition of the existing improvements. Tonight, I'm going to have three witnesses. My first witness is going to be an engineer. My second witness is going to be a planner. My third engineer is an expert in historical status and review. If I may, I'd like to call my first witness, my engineer, Matthew Zwingergraf.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name for the record and also spell your last name?
Sure. Matthew Zwingergraf, Z-W-I-N-G-R-A-F, a project manager with CME Associates, 1460 Route 9, Allen, New Jersey.
And Matt, thank you.
And are you offering him as an expert?
Yes, an engineer.
So if you can provide qualifications, please.
Sure. Matt, can you please provide your educational background, whether or not your license is still in good standing, and what license you possess?
Sure. I have an engineering degree from Lafayette College. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as a certified floodplain manager and certified municipal engineer. All my licenses are currently and have always been in good standing with the state and their respective boards.
Thank you. Does this board accept as an expert engineer?
Yeah.
Have you testified in the past?
I have, yes.
Have you testified to any boards in Asbury Park in the past?
Not in Asbury Park in the past.
Any local boards in the, in the area?
Nearest board would be the Borough of Carteret.
License in good standing?
He did say yes.
Okay, proceed.
Hi, Matt. Are you familiar with the R1 Zone District?
Yes.
And is this such a property located predominantly in the R1 Zone District?
Yes.
Do you have an opportunity to review the city's ordinances and master plan?
Yes.
Can you please discuss with this board what we're proposing here tonight?
Certainly. I'd like to first just orient everybody with the site. Presented before us is an enlargement of the key map shown on the cover of the site plan. It shows the site, which is known as Block 2703, Lot 3, which is 701, 705, Second Avenue. It's located at the northwestern intersection of Second Avenue and Bond Street. The site is approximately 1.13 acres, or 49,027 square feet. As Mr. Prisata said, this is located in the R1 zone. Existing conditions on the site include a vacant Roman Catholic church, as well as a one-story garage and three-story administration building. The applicant proposes to clear the existing improvements on the site, subdivide the site into six lots, and propose six single-family detached homes.
Could you please walk us through your slides? Thank you.
You may be able to extend that.
I tried before. I think the HDMI cable's too short.
So can we, what, what number should we put on these, this presentation?
Have these already been submitted to the Board, or these new plans?
This is a colored rendering of the, of the site plan.
So it's colorized, it was A1?
Yeah, A1.
So which... I'm sorry, which page are we on, on the plans that the Board received?
This would be a colorized version of what's shown on Sheet 4.
4 of 9?
4 of 9, correct.
Does this have a revision date?
This does not have a revision date.
So we'll date it today?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And just so we know, that the Board has a version from June 15.
All right. Looking at Exhibit A1, like I said, the applicant proposes to clear all the existing onsite improvements and subdivide the property to create six fully conforming single-family lots. I'd like to note that single-family residential lots are permitted use in the R1 zone. On this rendering and on Sheet 4 of the subdivision plan, the lots are numbered for demonstration purposes as lots 3.01 through 3.06 in a clockwise fashion from the northeast. I'd first like to just quickly summarize the square footages proposed for each. Lot 3.01 is proposed at 12,628 square feet. Lot 3.02 at 7,000 square feet. Lots 3.03 and 3.04 at 7,140 square feet. Lot 3.05 at 7,600 square feet, and Lot 3.06 at 7,520 square feet. Four of the lots are proposed to front along Second Avenue, and two of the lots proposed to front along Bond Street. One single-family detached residence is proposed on each lot.
Is demonstrated, correct?
Is demonstrated, correct. Yes.
These are, the proposed improvements we see here tonight, those are for visual aid only, correct?
Correct.
As these proposed improvements are not required pursuant to the checklist requirements of municipality?
That is correct.
For subdivision approval?
Correct.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I'd like to note that we're in receipt of the Board Professionals' letters dated June 23. I note that these letters identified three design waivers.
To clarify, those are both the reports from in-site, correct?
Correct.
And then also the planning as well?
Correct. Correct. These design waivers that were, that were noted will address each of these to eliminate the need for relief in these areas. Those items included the fence type proposed on one of the yards, the street trees, and the orientation of the garage doors. The proposed front-facing garages will be recessed five feet behind the front building wall, to comply with the Board Professionals' comments with respect to placement with regard to the front building wall. Currently, as shown on the plans, they were in line with the, on some, in line with the back of the porch, and others in line with the front porch. So these will be revised to be five feet behind the front building wall.
Well, are we doing a subdivision, or are we doing a development plan?
We're only doing a subdivision.
So why are we talking about garages?
Okay. Yep, we don't have to cover those.
No.
Okay. With regard to bulk requirements for each of the lots, we're proposing lots that will comply with the 25-foot front yard setback, 6-foot side yard setbacks, 14-foot combined side yard setbacks, and 25-foot rear yard setbacks. Lot coverage will be also in line with what is permitted in the R1 zone, including maximum building coverage of 30% and maximum total lot coverage under 65%. I can just quickly go over parking. Each of the lots that's shown for demonstration purposes proposes 3.5 parking spaces via two-car garage and a 20-foot wide driveway. All sidewalks along both frontages of the project would be replaced in their entirety to provide conformant sidewalks with respect to the city's ordinances. Also, just to quickly go over the Board's Professionals' comments regarding the trees, we would take under consideration revising the street tree species to comply with the Board's reports, as well as the number and orientation of the street trees, as well as the comments related to the 6-foot tall vinyl fencing proposed in one of the front yards. Utilities to each lot would be provided underground, including sanitary sewer, water, gas, electric, and telecommunications services, as required. And regarding stormwater requirements for the site, so the site is categorized as a major development, as it does exceed one acre of disturbance. As such, we have to meet certain standards with regards to water quantity, water quality, and groundwater recharge. Groundwater recharge and water quality are both exempt on this site, given that we are reducing the amount of motor vehicle impervious coverage compared to the existing condition. And as the site is located in a state planning area, PA1, it's exempt from groundwater recharge requirements. Regarding water quantity, as noted in the Board Engineers' review letter, stormwater calculations would be revised to consider the full 65% impervious coverage to demonstrate full buildout of the site. I'd like to note that even if proposed at full buildout, 65% maximum lot coverage, there would still be a net reduction in impervious cover, both motor vehicle and standard impervious cover, that will result in a reduction in peak flow rates, as we would be reducing from the existing 69% lot coverage that exists today down to the 65% full lot coverage, which is permitted under the R1 zone.
And just to confirm, what we're proposing here tonight is a major preliminary subdivision application, right?
That's correct.
And your proposed plans demonstrate that the site can accommodate it without triggering any variances?
That's correct.
And if at a later date the applicant were to propose a single-family home in each one of these proposed lots, each lot could accommodate a fully conforming single-family home?
That's correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Well, I have a couple of questions. You testified concerning fences, which is not part of this application, correct?
Correct, not at this time.
Okay. On, on this Sheet 4 of 9, on the copy that I have, there is a dashed line on each of these lots, and they run parallel to the, the boundary line of each of these lots. Is that the potential building envelope that you have shown?
Correct. So the dashed line shown on the plans that parallel the property lines represent the setback lines or the building envelope. So in the front yard, it corresponds with a 25-foot front yard setback, 25-foot rear yard setback on the rear of the site, and then the respective 6-foot and 8-foot side yard setbacks. So that does represent the maximum building envelope that could be proposed on the site.
Okay. Again, on Lot 1 specifically, it appears that the, what you have shown in the tan color sits right on the property line. Is that correct? Or is that, or is that tan color not part of this application?
That tan color is not part of the application tonight. It's simply shown for visual representation of what could be proposed.
Fair enough.
So just to, to clarify here, are we saying that these homes that are depicted here could potentially be a lot bigger?
The homes as they're proposed were limited to a 30% maximum building coverage for the site.
And is that what you're showing us, 30%?
These show approx, these are approximately just under 30%. They range from, I have it in front of me here. So these range from approximately 17% up to 28.5%.
So the ones that, the ones that are 17% could potentially go to 30?
That is correct.
And which one is that?
That would be Lot 3.01, the large, regular-shaped lot on the top of the exhibit.
Just to clarify, that would also require to also satisfy the other bulk standards, including side yard, rear yard setbacks.
That is correct.
Okay.
But just to be perfectly clear, that's not part of this application.
That's correct.
I think that there is a, there's, it's hard to stay away from the fact that you're, you're going to have the large driveways, taking away parking spaces without, because it's not part of the application, so we can't even have that discussion. And that's a little rough for me. Or that we have the right amount of trees, when that's not part of this application. And the coverage and all that, that's not part of the application, but yet we see it here. I don't know, does anyone on the planning board have any questions regarding the testimony?
Well, hang on, before we move on.
Before we move on, so the thing about the street trees, oh, it might be sleeping. The thing about the street trees is, that is a requirement of the subdivision application.
The street trees are?
That is sort of a global element of the application. So the calculation of the number and type of trees is relevant to their application. Where they ultimately end up, as you know, is going to vary depending on, you know, what we have configuration-wise on the streetscape and what ultimately the commission, you know, agrees on in Michelle's office and
Right.
everybody gets together. So as far as the number and type of street trees is definitely part of the conversation. I understand your concern about the driveways, my first draft of this with Michael, we were much harsher about the orientation of driveways and the number of driveways and the on-street parking, but again, that's sort of a variable that's going to get decided when they come in with their building plans. You know, they may decide to do a one-car-wide driveway to a detached garage in the backyard, and then it won't be as egregious-looking as what we're seeing here. But it is not relevant to the specific creation of lots.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me piggyback on it, it's not relevant to the specific creation of lots, but it is relevant to any resolution, and it is relevant to what happens between any approval and what happens, what the applicant does when they come back for final. So I do think that we have to have some discussion on some of these things in order to ensure that this board is going to be satisfied that what comes back before the board in the future for final is going to be in compliance with the borough ordinances.
Well, being in compliance with the borough ordinances versus what we always ask for is like, all right, how many parking spaces are there? How many are going to be there? How many are you taking away? With, if we can't have that information, you'd know, I mean, once we have that information, we can tell you, it's like, you know what, that's not going to happen because we need you to, we need more parking spaces. But that's not part of this discussion, and that's what makes it difficult.
But they are allowed to have six driveways, they are allowed to have six curts, cuts, they must meet residential site improvement standards, they must be, meet the local ordinances, and those can all be conditions of any resolution of approval.
Are there limitations on the driveways, are there limitations?
If there's any deviations, it would require us to come back to your zoning board to seek any variance relief. What we're required to do before this board is we're required to provide plans that satisfy our checklist requirements, which we did, and therefore we're deemed complete. And we're here tonight to propose a subdivision from a single lot to six lots. And what we did was we wanted to demonstrate what we intend on doing with that. Now, if when we come in for land development, we have any type of proposal that triggers any of the variance, we have to come back to the board. And those plans we submit to this municipality still have to be consistent with their zoning ordinances, and then also residential site improvement standards, which are governed by the state as well. So there are most certainly plenty of guidelines still in place that we have to follow and follow.
Well, with that, I certainly agree, but as you've known, if you've ever watched any of these board discussions, is that we as a board have also asked developers to, perhaps if you need to have, how do we minimize the amount of parking spaces that we're removing? Even though it may not be an ordinance, we may ask for you to reconsider. And that's what makes this difficult, is that because, what are we asking you to reconsider? I don't even know. But it is not, because we very rarely do these types of, you know, just, just, you know, do a subdivision.
The type of application is a bit of a unicorn for the city.
Right.
We don't really have, you know, the tools in the ordinances to use as a hammer, you know, to get what we want, what we, what we think we desire, right?
Which is not a subdivision.
Or, you know, two-car-wide driveways side by side with front entry garages and
Or the orientation of the lots themselves as they are, which is certainly open to discussion.
Right.
But what they're, you know, but what?
Those are more urban design, pattern of neighborhood, character, things like that.
What the engineer has testified to is that all of the lots created will conform to the standards that our ordinances require, and whether or not we agree with the premise of the subdivision is fully and completely irrelevant.
That's kind of what it sounded like, Eric.
Yep.
I have a question about the, in the planner's report, it talks about there's this one section that's in the B district. And then there's a note explaining that, you know, zoning, it goes to the larger portion, larger portion zoning districts, regulations apply.
Yeah, so
So if it weren't, this is just, so if it wasn't subdivided, that would just stay B and, it's existing, it has that one section that's business, and the rest is?
So the existing lot three?
Yep.
Is split-zoned?
Split.
With that little tail
Very, very.
From the, from the B zone.
Okay.
And, and it's an artifact from, between the Main Street redevelopment plan and the old B zone, and when we did the amendments to the zoning ordinance two years ago already now, going on. You know, there was a debate as to whether we clean up the map with these little artifacts, and there were, there were problems with that notice-wise. And so we felt the, the best tool is, if we have something like this, and it's split-zoned, just use, you know, it's obviously like a typographical error, it's a mapping error, it's inconsequential. The intent is for this tract to be R1, and so all of the tract will be treated as R1. Under that provision.
This provided, this is not a comment time. It's only questions about the testimony.
Well, he'll tell me whether he can answer it or not. That would be fair. Were there any covenants that run with the land? And if so, how did you deal with them?
Any what?
Covenants, promises, something on the deed.
It's hard to hear you.
Any covenants that run with the land?
This is not the appropriate expert for that. I do have an expert that I'll be entering in as a witness. The third first.
Okay, can he answer perhaps? What are the surrounding properties of what you want to build? What's on the left and above it? Where's all that? What are those buildings?
Yes, certainly. So along Main Street, we have existing business. And along Third Street to the north is an existing multifamily residential lot.
Okay, thank you. Any?
My question is, I don't know if it's with the engineer.
Just one second. We're just gonna need your name, please.
Julie Styler. So my question is, you're gonna put up seven, six, 7,000 square foot homes in this area, and it's all done for that. But in the surrounding area, there's like commercial business on Main Street, and there's other little homes in the area. Isn't that gonna have a huge impact on the existing neighborhood? And even if you have, you know, garages and driveways, 7,000 square foot home, if it's a one family, it could be 10 people with 10 cars. So I don't know how you can get all those cars and people in this tiny little area that's always sort of been...
Ma'am, you have to ask a question. This is not the time for comments.
Okay, so my question would be, has that been considered in the engineering report?
I'd like to note that we're proposing lots that are consistent with the zoning of the neighborhood, and that at the time that a specific, you know, home would be proposed, you know, requisite parking would be provided.
Can I clarify the last person's question? She made reference to 7,000 square foot homes. I think the reference should be to lots.
Correct.
The engineer testified that the smallest lot is in the magnitude of 7,000 square feet. That's not the home that's being built. That is the size of the lot that the home is going to be built on. So to, they're not 7,000 square foot homes. I think the...
They actually might be. They actually might be much larger than 7,000 square feet, but we don't know that. It could be 7,000 square feet and fit in that footprint they've shown.
Just to clarify, Matt, can you please walk us through what this type of site could accommodate, being that roughly 7,000 square feet, and the building coverage cannot exceed 30%?
Sure. So generally, just to give the board some orientation with what's being shown on the plan, and keep in mind that each of the 10 squares on the plan represents roughly, you know, just under 30% maximum building coverage, which is permitted. The footprints of what's shown range from approximately 1,800 to 2,000, 200 square feet.
So the size of the homes that are allowed in that area, in that zone, is, would typically be the two and a half story, one family, like they're proposing? Or could it be two and a half stories and 7,000 square? Is that allowed in the R1?
The 12,628 square feet at 30% coverage, times two and a half floors, would be 9,400 square feet, 9,500 square.
So the largest lot, the one that's like triple the minimum lot size, could have a very substantial square foot, single-family dwelling, or a combination of principal single-family dwelling and a detached accessory building, like a garage or a cabin or a pool house. Does those count for building coverage? But is then also governed by impervious coverage? So there's some, you know, push and pull on this. But yeah, and they are limited to two and a half stories. So two full stories and then that, you know, half attic space.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, on the larger square foot lots, you could have a fairly substantial square footage house.
Okay. Any other questions from the public? No? Okay. Your next witness?
Thank you. Paul, my next witness, my planner, John Barry.
Mr. Barry, you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do, yes.
And for the record, can you spell your name?
Sure, John Barry, B-A-R-R-E.
John, can you please provide your educational credentials, what license you possess, what kind of standing, and then also name three land use boards we've been qualified in the past as an expert in planning?
Sure. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed planner in New Jersey. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, have been for about eight and a half years in good standing. And I have testified before a number of boards throughout the state. My firm previously represented the city of Asbury Park. It's been five or six years, but I did have the pleasure of attending board meetings here a few times. And recently, I've been in Summit, Touching, I was in Touching the other night, where else? West Orange.
Thank you. Does this board accept us as an expert in planning? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
John, are you familiar with the R1 Zone District?
I am, yes.
You can speak to...
Sorry, my...
It's on.
Yeah.
And is the subject property located in the R1 Zone District?
It is, yes.
Are you familiar with the city's master plan?
Yes.
Is it your professional opinion that this proposed development, this proposed development advances those purposes of the master plan?
Yes, so the master plan was amended fairly recently. And as it follows from that master plan, the subject property was actually rezoned from the R2 zone to the R1 zone, which permits single-family homes. And as such, the development pattern that's proposed here, the subdivision of six lots to develop single-family homes, is absolutely consistent with what the land use element of the master plan calls for.
Okay. Please walk us through that.
Sure. So the land use element of the master plan, which I said forms the foundation for the city's zoning ordinance, tends to identify uses, tends to identify things like density of development, which then translates into lot sizes, impervious coverage, building coverage, all the things that control the bulk of how buildings are developed. And so we have a fairly recent master plan. Sometimes we're not lucky enough to have that, and they can tend to get a little stale. But the recent master plan called for the R1 zone to be applied to this piece of property. And the development proposal that you have before you this evening complies in all respects to what's called for in the R1 zone.
Excellent. Can you please also walk us through the R1 zone requirements, why that's consistent with that as well?
Sure. So as was testified to by our site engineer, the minimum lot size for the R1 zone requirement is 5,000 square feet. So these lots range, as you heard, from 7,000 to about 12,600 square feet. Minimum lot widths are required to be 50 feet. Each of the lots meets at least a 50-foot minimum. Several of them are proposed at 70 feet in this configuration. The side yard, front yard, side yard, and rear yard setbacks respectively are 25 feet in the front, six feet on each side, with a combined requirement of 14 feet, and 25 foot in the rear. The proposal, the conceptual proposal that you see here today demonstrates that each of those lots can accommodate a building envelope that is appropriate for the development of a single-family house within the required setback boxes. And then the other two key, or other three key controls, I guess, of intensity of development that we're looking at, and you heard some testimony from the engineer. We have building coverage, a requirement of 30%. We have the maximum impervious coverage. And I was looking at the planning report, 60% in the planning report. I know Matt testified 65%. But either way, we meet the total impervious coverage requirement. And then we have a height requirement of two and a half stories and 30 feet. So taking all of those things together, you have a few different parameters that push and pull. And you end up with development footprints, probably, as Matt said, in the range for five of the six lots, in the right around 2,000 square foot range. And then a much larger lot on the irregularly shaped one, but there may be some other constraints in terms of the width of that lot that preclude development of a much larger house, because it might get to be an awkward configuration down the line. So overall, the overall development pattern's consistent largely with what you see along Second Avenue moving east, along Bond Street moving north and south. To the north, we have a former property, a property that was formerly owned by the church as well, that's now a multifamily residential building. And then along Main Street, there's the mixed-use development pattern, varying one to three stories with a mix of commercial uses on the ground floor, and then residences above.
Okay. And is your professional opinion that most applications fully conforming does not trigger any variances?
Yes.
I have no further questions from this witness.
Any questions from the planning board?
Hi, I have a question for Donna. So while this witness has testified that this conforms with the land use element of the master plan, what relationship does it bear to other aspects of the master plan, such as community aspirations towards affordable housing, historic preservation, all of the other things that I guess I would say, yes, the single-family, protecting and maintaining portions of our single-family environment are important. How do we weigh that against such things in our master plan that are also clearly stated, like historic preservation, and developing the Main Street corridor, which I would say this is absolutely a part of, et cetera?
So I guess you kind of have to look at it sort of hierarchically, sort of levels of prioritization. Statute says the land use element drives your zoning regulations. What you adopt ultimately are the rules and what you want. And so there are elements, in our other elements of our master plan, that say, we want this. This should be changed. Include this. And so we didn't do all of them. We didn't regulate those aspects. We, some of them are still in the drawing board, right? We still need to do the accessory units. We still need to do the urban design guidelines. There are tasks that were laid out in the master plan that this board identified as we still want to get to these. We knew the zoning amendments were really important. We wanted to get signs. We wanted to get the zoning district regulations. We wanted to swap out, you know, some of that building coverage and develop an impervious coverage standard. We wanted to do away with FAR. Those were like priority items for the actual tools of getting stuff built. And we just haven't gotten to those more aspirational, turn these desires into a regulation.
What this is pointing to is that we need a better development framework for portions of our...
We still have places to go in the ordinance, absolutely, as recommended by the master plan.
Because while this very well might conform to the land use element, it is a big fat mess on so many others.
Well, and you know, we've had this conversation, you know, we had differing opinions about, you know, should this property have been rezoned to R1?
No.
Should it have stayed R2? Is that really the best use of the property?
There's not a single-family home on this block.
I remember during, when we were considering this, that John and I specifically spoke out that we didn't think it should have been downzoned, because there were so many multi, single-family homes that were still multifamily and had been converted.
And so we have some of these glitches in the code, like with the PO zone, right? And some of these R2 zones that got downzoned. And, you know, it's a living document. We can go back and fix stuff, but right now, this is what we've got.
The B district could be extended to include that, like we did further south on Main Street for that residential development.
We need a better urban design framework.
To allow residential development.
So again, if we embark on some of these other studies that were recommended, that would point, you know, the regulatory side of things into, you know, adopting, whether it's through urban design, whether it's amendments to zoning, whether it's tweaking community design regulations, you know, whichever of those elements.
Main Street and Memorial Drive need to be looked at. That is, we keep running into this problem over and over and over again.
But that doesn't necessarily change the fact that, you know, sometimes...
Sometimes you don't know what you want.
Yeah. Can't be leveraged.
Totally.
And so we still have mechanisms like redevelopment plans. And so that is still, you know, the purview of the governing body as to whether it's appropriate for certain types of development in certain locations to receive those benefits.
A question for Jeff. So if the subdivision gets approved, but they decide not to build the homes themselves, but sell off lot by lot for somebody to build, what happens? They have to build...
Well, again, this application is strictly for the preliminary subdivision. It is not a final subdivision. They're still gonna have to come back here, whether it's this developer or a future developer. They still have to come back to this board before a final approval is given. And there's not a final subdivision of six lots, or however many lots, until that happens.
But if there was a final subdivision approved, then they decided to sell off the lots individually, what they have to abide by what was approved in entirety, or what?
Well, each owner would have to submit a zoning permit, like the process of any single-family owner. If what they're proposing is fully conforming, the zoning officer would give an approval. Then they would submit further construction permits. They would never come back before this board. If they are submitting plans that require variances, actually, in that situation, is gonna go to the zoning board of adjustment.
I mean, in theory, they could have taken this application, or they could have taken an application to the zoning board of adjustment and asked for relief there.
Well, if they had a use variance relief, this is not a use variance application. These are, single-family homes are permitted in the R1 district.
If they had a multifamily project, they could have gone to the zoning board and asked for a variance.
Oh, sure. They could have.
Well, wrong witness, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, it's not part of the testimony, so I don't think it's an appropriate question either as to why they did or did not. We have to review the application that's in front of this board now.
Well, they did testify that there were other considerations.
That was in response to the question by the mayor, though. That wasn't the testimony.
No, but they testified about why they didn't proceed with redevelopment plan.
Yeah, but I...
There's no interest, so they felt this is their next best option.
Yeah, but I think that was, that was the other witness. No, that was, that was...
That was the attorney.
That was the attorney in relation to Mr. Mayor Moore's question.
No, my question.
Or Rick's question, sorry.
Well, still, there was information conveyed that there were other considerations.
But this is permitted use, and permitted...
This is a painful pill to swallow.
Are you looking at me?
Any other questions?
I did. Hypothetically, once, if this was approved...
This is preliminary.
No, I'm saying this was preliminarily approved, then it went to final approval. And then the applicant decided that they wanted to combine lots to do something other than what has been proposed.
Generally, if I understand your question, you're asking if they decide instead of having six lots, having less than six lots.
Yeah, they decided we're gonna do three.
So generally, if you're taking conforming lots, and you are combining them into larger lots, there's no requirement of subdivision approval, because that's not a subdivision. Subdivision is generally making a smaller number of lots, a larger number of lots, or redefining lot lines.
So then what could they build on this?
Still only single-family homes.
Single-family homes, what the zone allows.
Only R1.
If they're gonna approve the six lots with those lines, and then they want to change those lines, that would be a different subdivision.
That would be a totally different subdivision. So if you're taking, for example, and I don't know the lot numbers, I'm assuming it's 306 and 305 are the bottom left two. But if those bottom left two are 305 and 306, and the applicant decided to submit a zoning application that combined those two lots into one lot, and put one house in the middle, that would not be a subdivision. They'd be allowed to do that. One of the requirements would be they'd have to do a deed of merger, so that it's one full lot. But they would be allowed to do that.
So erasing a lot line would be a merger, but if you reconfigured those, totally would be a different subdivision.
Well, let me clarify. Erasing only the interior lot line and combining the exterior lot lines into one lot would not be a subdivision. If you took a portion of 306, or the middle lot line there, if you decided that you had two 75-foot lots, and you, or two 70-foot lots, and you wanted to make one 50-foot, and you wanted to make the other one 95-foot, that would require a subdivision, because you're relocating the line, you're not expanding the exterior.
But no matter what, you have to, you have to conform to the R1, no matter what?
That is correct. Jurisdiction of this board is permitted uses in the zone.
So they couldn't ask for a variance to build something larger than an R1?
They could ask for a variance to build something larger in the R1, but again, they're gonna have to make a submission. Each lot is gonna require a submission to the zoning officer. The zoning officer's going to have to review to make sure there's compliance with building coverage, side yard setback, front yard setback, parking requirements, RSIS requirements, rear yard setbacks, height requirements. They're gonna have to satisfy all those things. If they can't satisfy each and every one of those things, and they don't want to revise their plan so that does comply, then they have to make an application to the zoning board of adjustment.
So if our master plan says to encourage the retention of historic structures, and this property is listed on the Monmouth Register of Historic Places, or Historic Buildings, does that give us any leverage to do anything?
I'm gonna defer that to you.
Leverage? It's an aspirational goal. We didn't give it any teeth. We didn't put anything in the zoning ordinance that says you will adaptively reuse registered historic structures, or prove that you can't in order to have some other use.
And since we don't have a preservation commission, there's no more...
But again, that's one of those other studies we're supposed to be doing, so that we can inform, you know, how to write more regulations and...
And this is not a historical zone.
Right, but it's a historic structure. I mean, it's only...
Well, and then, and again, as part of our study, we would, again, identify, well, it's only on the Monmouth County Register.
Right.
You know, do we want it to have a higher bar for preservation?
Right.
So that would be another, you know, thing that we'd ask, figure out, and then write regulations in support of those.
Any other questions of this witness by the board or our professionals? Okay, let's open it up. Open up the question. Questions to the public?
Same question before, because I don't know who you asked.
This is not the appropriate witness. My next witness, Mr. Winken will be testifying.
Hang in there. Okay. Any other public questions of this witness? Okay. Your next witness?
Thank you, like, Paul. And that's the final witness, Mr. Daniel Lincoln.
Go, go, go. We just saved for a minute.
Sorry, got that.
Mr. Lincoln, do you swear? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one second, if you don't mind.
Take a quick break.
All right.
Let's proceed. All right, Mr. Beekman.
Back on the record?
Back on the record.
Okay.
All right.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought we did that. Sorry, yeah, we started.
You said my name.
Yeah. Mr. Lincoln, you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Excuse me, excuse me, please. Go ahead.
Did you finish?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name for the record and spell your last name, please?
My name is Daniel Lincoln, L-I-N-C-O-L-N.
Thank you.
Dan, can you please provide your educational credentials?
Sure. And by the way, I'm an architect, not an engineer. I'm a historic preservation architect and a regular architect who hand draws, gives you a sense of how old I am. And my license is in good standing with the state of New Jersey. I have a certificate in historic preservation from Drew University, and a master's of architecture from the University of Pennsylvania, from a long time ago. And kept up with all my CEUs. I'm also a former president of the Historical Society of the Somerset Hills, which is in Vass Gaming Ridge, New Jersey. I did that for about 27 years. I am chairman of the Historical Preservation Advisory Committee at Burnet'sville, and also president of the Friends of Historic Burnet'sville. There's probably more I could tell you. I have testified, not here, but in numerous townships and boroughs in the state of New Jersey, mostly in the Somerset County, Morris County, and I think Union County.
Terrific. Does this board accept us as an expert in historical preservation and safety, Jersey? Thank you. All right, Dan, are you familiar with the subject property?
I am.
Have you had an opportunity to research and investigate the historical status of the property at the federal, state, county, and local level?
Yes, I have.
And did you also have an opportunity to review the title?
I looked at the title, but any questions related to the deeds, I should explain that as a historic preservationist, if I were to be hired to try to do a nomination application for a property, I would do deed research on that property, just to find out who owned it, when, when was the property transferred, to see if there was anybody of historic significance who owned the property. We also look at census information and things like that. Regarding specific deed testimony, I would say that would be more the title agency than myself, although I have read many, pardon me, many deeds.
Terrific. And then in connection with your study, did you also prepare a report?
I did. I sent copies, I believe, I hope you all got them through Irene.
Yes, can you please provide your findings, your conclusions and findings?
Okay, so I did try to keep the report down to about three pages of written testimony with a lot of pictures. What I've got up here is, actually, I'll teach you to switch to the second page. In the report, it includes this, but unfortunately, it's a two-page document, and when the fellow printed it, he did not print the second page. So I do have copies, which I'd like to hand out.
So why don't we, this, the first page was the first page?
The first page is in the report, but this page is not.
Why don't we mark that as A2? You can identify it, and then if you can submit the full copy of both pages of the report.
Right here. Thank you. The page that's up, the page that's up on the screen is the page that was missing. Sorry, my voice is a little bit raspy. Apologize. Okay, so the report I prepared, which was dated May 27th, I'm gonna need my glasses for some of this, actually starts out with some photographs of the church, actually starts out with the report. And the report basically identifies a little bit of background about the zone, some background about the streetscape, things like that, and a little bit of the history and description of the architecture of the building. The building is what I would call a seaside chapel. It actually reminds me of some buildings that were actually built a little bit later. And in the report, I talk about this. There's a unofficial terminology called starved Gothic, which basically means you, Gothic can be very elaborate, especially high Gothic. This church has restrained detail. The pointed arched windows aren't as high as high Gothic. The pointed arched windows aren't as high as high Gothic, it has, it's a step above Romanesque, which would have had round arches. Building is, I think, because it was built about 1884, I believe, and that bears fruit, if you look in the report later, you'll see something called the Sanborn maps, which were by the Sanborn Paris Fire Insurance Company, and date from, two I supplied were from 1890 and 1900, and the one from 1890 shows the neighborhood, it shows the church at the site in 1890, which bears, you know, supports the fact that the church was built in 1884. I did not have a history of the church to look at, so that was the only way I could sort of confirm that. It, I believe, my feeling is that because it was a seaside church, churches in general that were built in areas like this tended to be a little bit simpler. It wasn't like an inner-city high, you know, Newark or New York City, a church with a lot of elaborate detailing and a lot of money. So it was, it's a nice building. I'm sure some people here feel very strongly about it emotionally. I understand that. Okay. In terms of researching the historic status of the church, there's a number of ways you do this, and one is that you go to the National Parks, NPS, and then, excuse me, New Jersey Historic Preservation Office websites. You can also go to the county websites to look up what the status of the building is. So the building is not listed in the New Jersey Historic Preservation Office, it is not on the New Jersey National Register of Historic Places. So that was the first place that I checked. And this two-page document is actually a publication by the New Jersey Historic Preservation Office that explains what it means to be on the New Jersey Register of Historic Places. The importance of this page here that I've highlighted is that there are no restrictions to private homeowners when it comes to historic status on the state and federal nomination. This is a big misunderstanding by a lot of people, they think that if you're on the New Jersey National Register of Historic Places, that the building is protected from demolition, and that is not true. If it's, if the building's owned by a municipality, then there are a lot of restrictions if the municipality has gotten public funds to help restore the building. That is not the case here. This building is privately owned, in both cases before and now. The protections for this kind of status have to do with public projects or undertakings next to the building, for example, a road widening. The, if the building were on the New Jersey National Register of Historic Places, the public entity that was trying to do the road widening would have to take and do a 106 section, a section 106 review with the State Historic Preservation Office, which is a public meeting, which the public can attend, to therefore, you know, state their opinions about whether they think the road widening is a good idea or not. Sure.
Those registries, those are voluntary, right? Isn't that the problem, has to agree to be on it?
No. In fact, the property owner does not have to agree to be on it. You can do, undertake a nomination application without their permission, because remember, there are no restrictions. So if they wanna tear the building down, they can tear the building down.
It's more honorary than actually.
It's, it's about the public protection from things that could happen that are not under the owner's control. I live in a historic district, my house is a 1901 Center Hall Colonial, it's a lovely property with a wraparound porch. I could, in fact, demolish that building. Now, the fact that I was president of the Historical Society for 27 years, I don't think people would see that that made sense, and also, they'd be very angry with me, but that's, I say that sometimes to get people to understand that it has no protection. If you wanna protect a building, it has to be through zoning. In fact, if you wanna protect a building through zoning, it doesn't even have to be registered. You can ident, the town can identify itself as a historic element, come up with a list, and change their ordinance, saying that there are restrictions. Now, private homeowners are undoubtedly gonna have potentially some objections to this. Most times, there are a lot of restrictions, it has to do with tourism. So Essex Connecticut or Cape May, they have a lot of restrictions because the economy of their town is based on keeping those buildings looking the way they do and protecting them. Asbury Park certainly has the potential for that. The other places that I looked was the Monmouth County Historical Register, and all that is, is really an identification of a potential historic property. It entails no, again, no protections or anything like that. Everything has to be through zoning. I did also, again, the master plan, I'm somewhat familiar with what your intentions are. But again, since it's not been put in place, you know, the building is not protected. I don't mean to be wagging my finger at anybody, you know, I am a volunteer who does a lot of this in my own town. We've done grant applications for a property that we got the town to purchase, and we've raised over one and a half million dollars towards the improvements of that project. So I do take historic preservation very seriously. It's an avocation, it's something I feel passionate about. And if the, if what happens with this church being demolished is the flame that lights the fire, so that you all do something about historic preservation, instead of just talking about it, then I think you don't know what you got till it's gone, and if that's the sacrifice it takes, then that's the sacrifice it takes, because people have to be upset about something before anything is gonna really change. I mean, master plan, what you've got written there is great, but there's no teeth to it. I'm sure you all know this.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Do you on the planning board have any questions of this witness?
I do. Hold on one second, please. Mr. Lincoln, thank you very much. Any questions? I ask is not a reflection, I think you're good, bad, or indifferent, I think you're very good, so I appreciate that. Reading this report and asking the questions earlier, so Mountain View Developments, who is the applicant? JLD, just using another name hired you?
I'm sorry, having trouble understanding you because of the mask.
Mountain View Developments?
Yes.
It's been, already, if anybody wants to disagree with me, JLD is the applicant, and they use another name, Mountain View Developments, to hire you to do this report?
Correct.
Okay. Why? We don't know, it makes no difference. I go to page three of your report. Okay, the first paragraph, the last sentence in parentheses. It should be noted that Ms. Alonso spent hours of her time over the past several years in discussions with the Mountain View Developments companies discussing adaptive reuse of the Holy Spirit Church. Who told you that to put this in this report?
No one, I talked to her personally about...
And she told you she's been working with this group for many years?
I didn't say many years, I said she's been several.
Spent several years.
Some time, my understanding is that she had put in quite a bit of time as a professional and consultant, or I guess a staff member for the town, talking them about it and trying to, you know, reviewing the plans, and it was my understanding that it was, you know, well-received, that some of their ideas about the proposed development in terms of saving the church.
When you say it was well-received, who gave you that information?
Well, this could be hearsay, as far as I'm concerned, but it came from the, from my person who hired me.
Before I go, again, I have total respect for you, I'm not busting...
I know that.
...whatsoever. Do you know the former government in Asbury Park?
Not really, but I understand that the mayor has quite a bit of say.
Well, you're absolutely wrong. You're 100% wrong. We are a weak mayor, former government. You know what I get to do? Run the council meetings and appoint the library board. Besides that, there's five people on the council, I'm one of five. I get one vote. One vote. So when I read this last sentence, "The church reused projects was initially well-received by the borough staff and officials," I don't know who that is, "but not approved by the Asbury Park mayor." So somebody's basically telling you, me, the more the mayor with no power killed this project. And that I do take a problem with. So who told you that?
My employer.
Your employer told you that the mayor killed this project?
Yes.
Well, that understands why I've gotten some nasty emails, and nasty response from Father Miguel and other people, because I do not have that power.
Just so you know, nobody's seen this report except yourselves and my client.
I'm not sure.
Oh, then it was online, okay.
And now it's public, anybody can open, I mean, after this project was presented to mayor and council, enclosed exec, so I can't say what happened, it was not Moore against it and for it, and it died. The majority, if not the entire board, I'm not gonna tell you what it was, was against this project as proposed. So whoever told you, your clients told you that the mayor of Asbury Park killed this, your clients told you a bald-faced lie.
Okay, well, glad you have a chance to defend yourself.
And if I may clarify, I stated before, we were advised we did not get the administration's support.
Do what?
We did not get the administration's support, so it was not one single individual.
But that's not what this reads. I mean, so, I'm looking, look, John Moore can be a pain in the butt, John Moore can be a lot of things, but John Moore is not a liar, and John Moore is not, does not have the power of a strong mayor in Asbury Park. So when I read this, it really hits me hard, because I have no ego, I have no, like, hidden agenda, but it was like, I was like, when this failed at the council level, I was a marked man in Asbury Park, because somebody put out the story, the mayor Moore killed this project. And I've been dealing with that for, what, eight months now? And now I found out, your clients told you that, so, thank you.
Again, I just wanna clarify for the record, it was of our knowledge that the administration was not gonna support it, it wasn't singled out that it was Mayor Moore.
That's not what was said.
That's what I'm saying right now.
Okay, but that's not what was said 15 seconds ago, 45 seconds ago. The witness testified his bosses, his people paying him, were told that the mayor of Asbury Park killed this. The witness testified he did not know it was a weak former government, where the mayor does not have that type of power. So again, I have total respect to you, sir, but again, I'm not blaming you. Again, you wrote the report on what was told to you, and I totally respect that, and I thank you for your honesty. Thank you.
Sure.
You had mentioned something about title, you know, looking at title, and I know there's people looking at this question, and I think you admitted you're not a title expert, and you wouldn't certify a chain of titles.
No. No. Really, when we look at deeds, it's really, has to do with historical timeframe.
Mr. Lincoln, were you here at the last hearing with this?
Last time when we all met here?
Yes.
Yes, I was here.
Okay. And you heard the representation of someone from the audience that there was a title issue?
Yes, I have heard that there was an issue related to a very early deed that had something to do with not...
Did you research that?
I saw that it was flagged in the deeds, I saw it there, it's just my personal opinion that sometimes stuff like that, that's put in early deeds, doesn't always hold up.
But you didn't research that?
I didn't really research that.
That's not included in your report?
No, because I didn't even know about it.
I did review the deed, and the only restriction to the deed is related to residential usage, specifically setbacks on Bond Street and Second Ave. On Second Ave, it must be a 25-foot setback for any residential development, and also other developments which we wouldn't contemplate. And then another 15-foot setback from Bond Street, and that is a private restriction. And yes, we are common.
Is that testimony? If that's testimony, it needs to be sworn.
Just like... I'm licensed attorney, though.
Attorney, our attorneys generally don't get sworn in.
No.
If it's testimony, if that's testimony.
So, is there anything else for this witness? There's nothing else for this witness. So let's proceed with this witness. Public can ask any question that they can ask.
For the witness?
For the witness. It's their presentation, it's not our presentation. Okay.
Any other, any other questions from the board or from our professionals? No? Public, please come to the microphone.
I just wanna ask one question. Irene Bernie?
Okay.
Came from Asbury Park, a longtime parishioner. But did you go inside the church?
Did you name and...
Irene Bernie from Asbury Park, Sunset Avenue.
No, I have not been in the church, but I have seen photographs of it.
Okay, because I mean, because you described it as a small seaside, it's magnificent, it's almost like a cathedral. I know that's not, you're saying it can constitute, but the other question I had was, how did we not consider this a landmark? It's over 125 years old.
Is that a question for me?
I think, I don't, what constitutes?
It just hasn't been designated as a landmark, it's not on the state register, it's only been listed on the Monmouth County Register of Historic Places.
And it says, I can't believe it, that they don't decide?
No, well...
And what constitutes, what is, you know, you're saying, we're talking about...
If that process is not undertaken by either the property owner or some other entity, it's just not listed as a landmark, and this process was not undertaken for this property, which is not good, but it's the truth.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Tom DeSeno, 3600 Route 66 in Neptune. Sorry, I didn't catch the witness's name.
Daniel Lincoln.
Lincoln, Mr. Lincoln, good evening. You were here for the testimony of the other two experts, correct?
Yes.
And you would agree with me that neither of those experts testified to any restrictions that might be in the deed, correct?
Correct.
And you yourself have stated tonight that you did not do any analysis to see if any deed restrictions are contrary to being what's proposed tonight, correct? You didn't do that?
No, that would be more of an undertaking if I was gonna do a nomination application.
Okay, but you did actually review the deed, the 1880 handwritten deed from James Bradley?
Very briefly.
Okay, and when you did that review, you saw that there were various things that may run with the land, different conditions, you saw that they were in there, correct?
I saw one line, yes.
Okay, well, there were several, was it there? I mean, you did review the deed.
I didn't review the whole deed, I reviewed the part that was flagged.
Okay, the part that was flagged had to do with setbacks from a particular point, correct?
I only saw something about single-family residences.
In that line, and I have it, if you need to refresh your recollection, I can show it to you. I'm not really...
This is a private restriction was before this board, is a land use zoning application, this is outside the board's jurisdiction. The purpose of me explaining the history of the title itself was just to lay clarity that there was no restriction on residential usage, which I know has been out there in the media openly.
If I could respond?
Is there a restriction that runs with the land, that legally runs with the land? In fact, the subdivision could be beyond our zone?
So here's the thing.
Can I continue my cross-examination?
No.
Because I'm gonna get to the point that you're asking.
The board is asking me a question, allow me to fill in the board, because they're ultimately gonna make a decision, Mr. DeSeno.
I know that, I'm aware of that.
So here's the thing about private restrictions. If it is a private restriction, not from the city of Asbury Park, not a restriction as part of a development from the zoning board or the planning board, in general, this board has nothing to say about what that private restriction says. That private restriction may affect how the property is developed in the future, but they have to comply. We have no authority over that. Our authority is limited to what's in our zoning ordinance and what the purview is. What are the setbacks? What are the lot sizes? What are the frontages? What are the front widths? What are the rear yard setbacks? How high can a building be? If there is a restriction, a private restriction, which is what the questioning is about, a private restriction that is more restrictive than our zoning ordinance, then either the property owner has to address that through the Chancery Court privately, having nothing to do with this board, or the property owner may get objections from neighbors if there's what's called a neighborhood restriction, a neighborhood development that says all lots can only be developed with these certain standards. But that is a private matter, that has really nothing to do with this board. This board is looking at the application and the lot size of a preliminary subdivision and our zoning ordinance, and that's it.
So if I may, if there was a deed restriction that said you could not build single-family homes, here, but the zoning says it can, a private individual could bring it up to have that enforced, but we as a board can't?
That is correct. A private individual has the right, if they are an interested party in the matter, there are certain jurisdictional requirements, you have to be an interested party. But yes, a private individual could take that up to the Chancery Court and allow the court to oversee those title defects. But we are looking at a zoning ordinance, we are looking at what's before us today, and it's my opinion that a private... and it's my opinion that a private restriction would only impact the development relative to an objection between owners or among owners, perhaps.
So like a deed restriction that says this lot can't be subdivided? What about that? Like, but we don't, I'm not suggesting that's what it says, it does not, to my knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, hypothetically, that's not what our ordinance says. We're limited to our ordinance.
That's my question, is that even if the deed said that, we would still hear this application in the exact same way and they would have to go settle it at the Chancery Court after?
Correct. And if there is a change and it doesn't comply with these proposed lot lines, they would have to come back before our board with what those changes are.
Something relevant, like, you can't have access from a certain point. We must share access with the adjoining neighbor. They have to have, you know, things like that. That might be relevant for this board considering the subdivision application.
You mean if there were a deed?
Or some other right or benefit conveyed to, or a restriction from, so for example, we have this adjoining building, right? Party wall?
Yes.
So, what are the rights and restrictions associated with that building? By removing the existing church building? Are there any impairments to that? They have to, you know, provide right of access? There was, maybe they had right of access through that building? Do you have to require right of access? That might be relevant to the planning board.
So, the thing is, without seeing it, we don't know.
True.
So that's, without seeing the, before the deed, we don't know what else is in there.
We don't know what else is in there, if there is anything in there, correct?
I mean, I...
That would come up when they're like going for development, approved of development plans and all that.
So, what would be the first on the checklist? If there's an easement or some other restriction, you have to provide that as part of the application documents.
Right, that would be in the final...
Right, but if there is a, just this private instrument that only affects, you know, the property owner? You know, there's something that really forces them to take it that way.
And at the same time, I do think that we should proceed with the questioning, so the board can listen to it. But at the same time, you have to consider the weight as to whether it's relevant to what's before this board and the jurisdictional limits of this board.
I think that we also have to be clear, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that whatever you guys are talking about, whatever you see, we've not seen. We don't have any of that. So you're talking about an event or a paper or something like that, that this board has never seen unless they dug into it on their own.
Could I finish my examination without having to go through a relevancy argument before I'm done?
Although, before you do, tell me, just say one more thing. Without seeing it, you know, we don't know its impact and don't know if it renders the application efficient.
Thank you. Mr. Lincoln, you heard when, you heard counsel's position that if it's a private document between private individuals, that is not the concern of the planning board. And you agree with that, right?
Makes sense to me.
And you also heard him say that if it was a government restriction, then that would be the concern of this board. You heard him say that, right?
Objection, he's not a licensed attorney.
I asked him if he heard he said it.
Objection.
I don't think so. I mean, you're really getting to an area that I don't have an...
I'm asking you, as you sat here, did you hear with your ear counsel say, did you hear...
Your objection's noted.
Did you hear with your ear counsel say that if it's not a private instrument, that if it came from the government, it's something that this body could consider? Did you hear him say that?
He didn't say it exactly like that.
Okay.
It sounded more like...
Well, would you, would you agree with that? That if it came from the government, then it's a restriction that could be considered by the planning board?
An easement from the government.
Right.
Objection, he's asking for legal interpretation.
Mr. Beekman?
He's asking for an opinion. Your objection's noted, it's on the record.
He's an expert witness, he can give opinions.
Yeah, well, is it, my, I would have questions, because I'm not sure how to answer that.
Well, what questions do you have?
It's a government, what is a government regulation?
Oh, that's, that's where...
Is an easement a government?
That's exactly where I'm going next, so let me, let me ask you about that then. You came here to testify from a historical perspective, did you not?
Yes.
Okay, did you, in that research, look at the configuration of the governing body of Asbury Park in eighteen-eighty when this was written?
No, that would be well beyond what would be necessary for my report.
Well, let's explore that. If it turned out that James Bradley, who founded this town only six years prior, was the governing body, and the way that he divvied up the deeds was he bought the land himself and on behalf of Asbury Park, then gave out the deeds with these restrictions, would you agree that that would make it a government instrument, not just a private instrument?
I think that could be argued either way.
It could be argued either way. So it's something that you would leave up in the air before this board?
I think it would have to be settled by a different authority then.
But for tonight, you would leave that question open, whether or not that was a government instrument because Bradley was the government? You're leaving that open for this board?
This is really beyond my purview.
I'm, so you are leaving it open, I'd just like a yes on that.
I think he answered it's beyond his purview, you got your answer.
The answer was yes, so I'm clear?
The answer was it's beyond his purview.
So he's leaving it open. Okay, and when you looked at that deed restriction, did you look at whether or not the point of measurement of the setback would leave these six lots in compliance with that deed?
No.
Okay, so that's something that's also not before the board tonight, is whether or not these six lots would comply with that deed restriction.
Is that a question?
Yes, another, what I'm asking is, I'll put it another way. You've not answered for this board, whether, I need to finish the question for the record. You've not answered for this board whether that deed restriction, that twenty-five feet, that whether these six lots would be in compliance with that. You've not answered that question.
Because it's not my...
That's not what I'm asking, if it's your job, I'm asking if you answered the question.
I can't answer the question.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
Anyone else? Any other questions? We have one more.
Hello.
Hello.
Excuse me, my name is Robin Nanny. I have an apartment in Asbury Park and I own a business. I have a question for you, sir.
Sure.
You're a historical expert.
No.
You're a...
Is that a question?
Yeah, no, I'm questioning, you are a historical expert. My question to you is, why did you not look at the historical data of the church from its conception, of the history of that church over the time period, and taking that in consideration that the people of Asbury Park built that church? I'm asking you why you didn't look at that data?
That was beyond the scope of what I was being asked to study. Again, if I'd been asked to, to prepare a nomination application for the project, I certainly would have looked at all those resources. I was really just looking at the public records related to the building when it came to its historic status.
So does the board look at that information when they're making a decision on a, on the church?
Oh, yes.
With, I'm now directing to the board, does, with the board?
You can't ask questions of the board, you have to ask questions to this witness. And I want to remind everyone here, the witness is testifying as an historical architect.
Architect.
That's, that's the purpose of his testimony, historical architecture.
Okay. Still, that's...
Let me say one thing.
Sure.
Because of what I do, I certainly understand any emotional feelings you have about this building. I have personally experienced multiple, multiple buildings being torn down in my area. I do what I can to save them. I've saved multiple barns that would have been torn apart and had been relocated to new location. As I mentioned, I've written so many grant applications, just on one building, with one point five million dollars towards improving that building. I understand where you're coming from. But the fact is, the building is not registered, it's not protected, and that is not my fault. That is the fault of everybody on the board.
Including anybody that lives or works in Asbury Park?
Yes.
Including anyone who has a interest in the, in preserving the church?
And let you, I'm telling you, it is really, really hard to get people to support this.
And I appreciate that.
Because you have to go to, I mean, in my neighborhood, there were fifty properties and I'm really hard way how to make that happen. You, that is incredibly important.
And that's what I stand on. So if I, as a person, wanted to apply, I could, correct?
Yes, you don't have, well, it helps if you've got a, somebody who has some experience with it. And I'd be happy to talk to you about what is required, but I should caution you, you might want to be looking at a different... There are many, many buildings here that need this protection, not just this one.
This is the first, thank you.
No, actually, you probably, you're using parts as the first.
No, this will be the first for us.
For you?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a, it's a long, hard road and I'm not telling you not to do it. But you have to contact the State Historic Preservation Office and ask them how to proceed. And I'd be happy to talk to you after this about how you do that.
Absolutely.
But I can tell you, it takes a while.
Right, the church will stand.
Any other questions from the public?
I don't know if this is necessarily directed at the witness. Is it within the board's power to request like a highest and best use appraisal comparing this subdivision, single-family versus their fifty-two unit multifamily development?
No.
As an appraiser, I could tell you the highest value would be...
What's that?
I said as a professional real estate appraiser, I could tell you the highest value would be for multifamily development.
Well, I figured, I figured that.
And from a master plan standpoint, what we need is multifamily housing.
I can tell you that I was involved in a project in Burnsville called The Heritage, which involved St. Pernod's Episcopal Church and a subdivision. The church and the parish hall are both on the New Jersey National Register of Historic Places. I was hired by the company, the church has been a longstanding client of mine, to consult on the best use of that parish hall, which was to remove condominiums, and also to consult on what the new buildings would look like. Because there were sixteen other units added, and then I also designed the new parish hall. And that, the building which was the old parish hall was designed by Henry Janeway Hardenberg. I might have mentioned that in here. And he designed the Dakota Hartman's and the Plaza Hotel in New York City and lived in Burnsville. So they got an absolute gem. So it does happen. I'm sorry.
I've got a question. My name is Steven Levinson, fifteen oh one Ocean Avenue. I've been to a lot of churches and I'm not of that persuasion, but I've been to churches in Rome, been to churches in New York, I've been to churches in other places. Would you suggest that because the churches in New York, the bigger churches, are not of the same status of the churches in Rome, that they're like little country churches?
This was, this was not part of the discussion, this was not part of the...
Actually, it was. He was making reference to, to the little, little church here by the sea. A shore church, and in effect denigrating it because of the size of it compared to churches in other places.
I'm sorry, you must really misunderstood, because it's a charming building. It's a lovely building, the inside is very special, I totally understand.
Did you put that in the report as well?
Well, sort of. I mean, it, it wouldn't have made a difference, even if I'd gotten very gushy about it. I talked about some of the merits of it. The building that I was just describing is actually very similar architectural. It's dark Gothic style, is, and that is sort of my own turn. I mean, I have heard it elsewhere, but you won't really read it in a book, because it's a more simple church. Because it's a country church. The diocese wasn't going to be spending an incredible amount of money on one of their churches in the area. So it's, it's simple.
It just sounds to me like it, it doesn't make it as valuable to the community because of the way that you're describing it.
You must recall, I talked about how people will feel very strongly emotionally about this. I understand, I understand. I'm not denigrating this building. I am saying that if you want to protect these buildings, there is a path to do that. But it's too, almost too late for this thing. So use this building for, to save everything else, okay? Because if you don't, this will not be the last project. Asbury Park is under a lot of pressure for development, and this is not the only historic building here. So get to work.
Yeah, well, obviously, it's not the first historic building that's, that's under attack, or that has been under attack.
They are all of it.
Just dealing with this particular situation.
I can't, I could tell you so many stories I couldn't sleep. So, thank you for your concern. Oh, anybody else?
I think of the benefit of the audience, the public is, I just want to clarify, like, as egregious as we may think this proposal is, what they're doing is allowed, permitted uses.
Absolutely.
Yes.
They're not doing, and they're not doing anything that's...
They're complying with the ordinance, and you also just received testimony that doesn't, demonstrates that there's nothing that prohibits the demolition of this eighteen-eighty-four building.
And, you know, I think that, I do too, to add on to Rick's sentiment is, I think that there's probably unanimous consent on this board that we would like to see the church remain as it is, but we do not have the power to make that happen out of hand. Now, what it does say is that as a board and our, and our governing body has work to do, and quickly, to think about how our zoning ordinance is or is not performing properly to preserve things and produce the outcomes that we have said we want in our master plan. And we have, we do have the power at the instruction of the city council to amend the zoning ordinance. But we're not here to do that tonight. We're here to look at this application, which conforms in every way to what is allowed.
It's unfortunate.
In the absence of a actual...
Are we still open for public questions?
We're still open for public questions, and if we're finished with that...
Preservation commission. Does the city council have the ability to act as a preservation commission? Or does that have to be actually codified somewhere, or how, is that a possible, is that something?
There are steps that you have to do to create a historic preservation commission.
And, and because we don't have one, does the, and the council's considered like the primary developer, does that give them some power to, you know, say, no, we've, you know, we can't allow this structure to be demolished because it's on with register? I mean, is there any, any power there in, in the absence of an actual commission?
Well, if you're asking me about for this application, the answer's no. With what's before you tonight. If you're asking about future applications, as Donna had indicated, there's a lot of work that has to be done in order to get to that point.
You don't necessarily need a commission. I mean, you could, you know, you could use a subcommittee of the planning board to study the issue and come up with guidelines, recommendations, or ordinance amendments.
Yeah, and, and I...
Or, you know, highest and best path is create a mission, give them a goal.
Or just on the zoning, create, create historic districts and put certain regulations.
Well, there's...
But it's supposed to be informed, you can't just...
You can't put that as a...
Yeah, you can't just throw stuff into an ordinance, it has to be supported by findings. You know, some of those are in the master plan, but the master plan says, we need more information. You know, what really is important to the community about historic preservation? You know, how far do we want to go? Which buildings are really important?
But, but we can also recognize that in this particular location, the R1 zone is completely inappropriate.
Well, that's a different matter.
Which is what, which is what the planning board can do something about, is we can look at how the zoning is or is not performing.
Yes.
In the future, we can do that, it's still in the future, but we aren't doing it.
Again, that would be sort of like a reexam, or you could still need... You still need a trigger, and in this whole land use law, like, you can just say, no, like...
No, we, we at the instruction of the city council...
I mean, we can have Planning List one oh one later.
Well, we can make amendments to the zoning ordinance in conjunction with the city council and suggest that there are several examples of how it's not performing to the standards that our master plan is telling us. That's, that's evidence.
That the governing body has made the decision.
Correct.
Careful, that may be mistaken. Yes, yes, that's correct. The, the city council needs to instruct the planning board to do that, if it so desires.
If it so desires.
There's an allegation that a...
I can't tell you to do anything.
...deed might not be a private restriction, but double restriction. If that was so found, you'd...
Well, the board has to make findings of fact and conclusions of law, yes, and... Yes, and potentially, yes, that could be the case, but we haven't heard anything yet, and I don't know if we're going to hear anything or not. But right now, it's the applicant's case in chief being presented. Uh, I think we're still open to public questions. We have not closed that yet for this witness.
That's right.
But if there's doubt, if there is doubt that it's a government restriction, which would bind us, how could we move forward? If it turned out to be that it was?
But you weren't told that.
No.
Well, somebody, somebody made a comment, that it is, that it is.
But the, the hearing's not closed.
Okay.
Let's proceed with the hearing.
Any other questions from the public? Okay. All right, just for this, just for this gentleman.
But this was, right?
Right.
I don't know if this is the right question, but if you have...
If you could just state your name, please.
Oh, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I'm not good at this. I want to know if you have a deed restriction on anything, my property say, would I be able to sell it?
That's, that's not an appropriate question for this, and, and we can't give legal advice.
Yeah, but that's the question.
We can't give you legal advice, and the question has to be for this witness, and that's not what he testified to.
Okay. I didn't hear all this testimony, but could we get a copy of it?
Of the testimony?
Yes.
You can watch EPTV.
I, I'd like to read it.
Well, you can, you can submit an application for an OPR request and pay for the transcript, but you have to pay for the transcript.
It's okay, but I could get it, right?
You can get a copy of the transcript, you just have to pay for it.
All right, but that was my question. I mean, like, you talked about the, you talked about the deed restriction like it was nothing, that you can't handle it here. It has to go to another court for the deed restriction, is that in?
What I'd indicated to the board is if there is a private deed restriction that affects property, that is a private matter. This board's jurisdiction is limited to the zoning ordinance and the restrictions and, and conditions of the zoning ordinance. Unless there was some type of a governmental direction, such as a prior resolution relating to a property, that placed a restriction on development. Something along those lines would be applicable to an amended or a new application affecting that same property.
Okay, well, there is something called the Bradley restriction, and that might be the private restriction that you're talking about.
You, you have to ask a question for this witness. If you don't have a question for this witness, we need to move on.
That's a very important one.
All right, any other questions from the publics? Okay, um, all right, thank you. You have another witness?
No, I have no further witnesses.
Are you finished?
Uh, yes, I am finished.
Okay, I'd like to suggest that we take a five-minute break before we start, go through the comment portion of this application. Can I get a second? Right.
When we come back, you can decide on the side.
You go for it. Be back in five minutes. Okay, can we all open up, uh, the meeting once again? Would you like to take roll call?
Sure, uh, I need my list here, sorry. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Evonne Clayton.
Here.
James Bonanno.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Eric Gilpo.
Here.
Daniel Schiameno.
Sean, yes.
Sorry, I done my saying that straight. Sean Mayo. Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Chairman Kerzak, Chairwoman Kerzak, sorry.
Okay. All right, now we're in the, in the comment phase of this application. So can I get a motion to open up comment, public?
Well, i- if I may, before you open up comment, I don't know if there is a case in chief by any of the objectors, meaning that they want to present any evidence and testimony by witnesses.
Okay.
Um, if there is any, I think we need to open it up to that first before we have public comment.
I would, I'm happy to do that, I thought there was none, so, I'm sorry.
So let's just make sure that if we have any testimony or witnesses from any objectors, that we give them the opportunity to do so.
Sure, anyone? Any testimony from the objectors?
I, I thought there was an attorney here who was going to...
Nope, he did, he's not. Okay, all right.
So we'll make a motion to close that portion?
Yeah, we'll make a moment.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nope.
Okay, public.
All right, so can I get a motion to open for public comment? Now, this public comment is for, uh, three minutes of, tell us how you feel, and...
Oh, I guess I have to do the timer too?
Wait a minute, we have, we might have a...
Oh, you have it, oh, oh, good.
Fancy.
How do we use it though? I could do it here.
Look at you, a man of many talents.
Is there a countdown?
Here it is.
You get one extra second.
I'll need it, I'll have one.
Okay, uh, would you like to, hang on, he needs to be sworn in.
Do you want me to fill in how the public comment works too?
No, no, we're just saying that, that we have to swear in.
Yeah, so, so just for everyone's understanding of how this works, we're going to swear in the witness. The witness is going to provide his or her name, and then as soon as they're sworn in, the clock will start and you'll have three minutes to, to provide your comments, okay? So, Mr. DeSano, you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name for the record, please?
Thomas DeSano, thirty-six hundred Route sixty-six, Neptune.
Proceed.
Good evening. I'd like to remind you, the audience and the board, that testimony is evidence, and it doesn't matter whether that testimony comes during direct examination from one's counsel, or if it comes from cross-exam by the board or cross-exam by the public. Any testimony is evidence to be considered. What we heard from Mr. Lincoln is that he kicked open the door about deed restrictions, because he testified on direct, by the way, that he saw a deed, it was from eighteen eighty, and that it, it had a deed restriction in it. So he put that in issue. So then we have to look, knowing that that's an issue, we have to look at the things that we don't know, because this presentation failed to address it. It failed to address whether this was a government document, because as many of you know, James Bradley founded this town only six years before eighteen eighty-eight, and he was the government. Anything he did was on behalf of the government, because he did not relinquish control of the government to the town until later. And in fact, there were several lawsuits, one of them that comes to mind was the nineteen oh two lawsuit, where he relinquished control of the entirety of the beachfront. So from seventeen, uh, eighteen seventy-four to a point that we don't know, this board doesn't know tonight, because it wasn't presented by this applicant, at what point did he relinquish control as the governing body to a separate governing body? So we don't know that, and we need the answer to that question. There was no testimony from any witness, and Mr. Lincoln confirmed that, whether or not this deed restriction, if it was government, uh, would make this, uh, proposal non-compliant, because they are not within the setbacks set forth in that deed restriction. So I'm not asking this board to ultimately say, at some point in the future, with, with remotions or rehearings, whether or not this is going to, uh, be allowed or fail, but it has to fail tonight, because he kicked open the door and said there was one, and didn't give this body the evidence of whether that's a government restriction or whether this plan meets that restriction. You couldn't, and I think Mr. Sean Mayo raised it with a question to counsel, how can we in good faith go forward and say we, and just assume the answers to these questions to be in favor of the applicant? You can't, you can't do that. You have to have the evidence before you, and they closed the hearing. They said they were done, they deferred to anybody else who had a presentation to make, and they didn't bring forth the evidence you would need to make this decision. And I respectfully request that when it comes time to vote, that you vote that this application failed for bringing you, bringing up the issue that there's a restriction, and failing to determine for you, to give you any evidence to go on, whether it was governmental and whether this plan is in compliance with it. Thank you.
May I ask Mr. DeSano a question?
If I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. DeSano, if I can ask you a question?
I, I don't know that under the rules, I'm subject to cross-examination.
Are you, you're, it's public comment, you are subject to cross-examination.
I don't think I am.
Are you, do you know of a restriction on this property?
Yes, I saw the deed restriction.
So you saw the deed?
Yeah, yeah.
Was there any reason why you were prevented from submitting that deed to the board?
Why, may?
Was there any reason why you couldn't submit that deed to the board?
Yeah, because I don't have the burden of proof here, the applicant does.
Okay.
The applicant does, and it's their responsibility to answer all questions to satisfy their burden of proof, not mine.
Okay, but, but are you, are you prevented from submitting that to the board?
Well, if I tried to submit it right now, you'd prevent me.
No, I wouldn't.
Well, can I submit it right now?
Well, that, that, I'll be honest with you, there was a reason why we opened it up for, um, to have, uh, testimony.
Right, well, I'm not making their case for them. What I'm pointing out to you is that they failed to make their own case. They have a burden of proof. That burden of proof has to be satisfied. They didn't satisfy whether or not that deed, which they, listen, this might not even be an issue if he didn't kick the door open. Mr. Lincoln kicked the door open and said, I saw the deed, he put that into evidence. He put the date in evidence, he put that that was a deed restriction in evidence. If he didn't say that, I would never like to stand on right now, but he did. He kicked the door open. That opens up the, the questions of, is it governmental? And is it, is this application in compliance with it? Not my job to, for you to say to me why didn't I do something about it. It's his job to do that, he didn't do it.
I, I understand the board's going to listen to the testimony, I just asked the question, is there anything prevented, that's all.
I gave the answer, I don't have to, he does.
I get, that's fine.
Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments they would like to provide?
Good evening, I'm Joe Risbondi, and I represent Shore Christian Church and the Jersey Shore Dream Center, which owns property in Asbury. Shore Christian Church has been renting, uh, leasing space.
Before you start to testify, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And are you an attorney, you said?
Uh, no, I'm not. I'm on the board at Shore Christian Church, and I represent the Jersey Shore Dream Center. Uh, and both of us, uh, both bodies have been interested in purchasing the Holy Spirit Church for use as a church.
So, if I could stop you, are you testifying on behalf of a corporation?
I am testifying on behalf of myself.
And what is your interest in the application? Do you live in Asbury Park?
I do not live in Asbury Park, but I have, as I said, we attend the church in Asbury Park, uh, and the Jersey Shore Dream Center owns property in Asbury Park.
Madam Chair?
Well, it, it sounds to me that you're representing some, a, a group as opposed to representing yourself. Is that true?
Well, uh, let me rephrase that then. Yes, I'm here on behalf of myself to express my own personal testimony.
There you go.
Okay.
Go forward.
Okay, thank you. So, um, the church I attend has been interested in purchasing the Holy Spirit Church to use as a church, and this has been since November of twenty twenty. Uh, I have been listening to everything that has been said tonight, and it seems that the board has a decision to make. I've heard about the master plan of the city and about aspirations that maybe were not or fully developed in terms of its historical structures and, and other things of that nature. I, I'm here to say that there is an alternative to, uh, proceeding down the path that would lead to the demolition of the Holy Spirit Church, and I urge the board to consider that and to consider those aspirations and master plan, the higher aspect, higher aspects of your master plan, uh, before you make the decision tonight to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come, uh, comment?
Robin Benny?
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I live, I have an apartment on, uh, Eighth Avenue, and I'm also a business person. Um, I have, over the last, uh, two weeks, collected signatures from people in Asbury Park, as well as the, those that come from other cities and towns nearby that also have the same goal to save the church. I just want you to know that, that the petition will continue, and we'll continue doing what we can, and that is my statement.
Anyone else like to make a comment, public comment?
I think I do, but so I don't know how to do this.
Yeah, just let's, uh...
Do you have to swear me in?
No, first we, let's finish the public, if that's okay. Anyone else? Nobody else? I don't think you can.
You what?
Oh, good point, nevermind. Can John make a comment as a public?
No, 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 during deliberations, you can comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, as a member of the board.
All right, nobody else, all right. Motion to close, public comment?
I'll show a little second.
Okay, now the planning board is, uh, open for comment, discussion?
Hey, mine's not a comment, mine's, mine's a question, and, uh, I appreciate Mr. Lincoln, Mr. Lincoln's report, and he was honest enough to say, "Well, Mayor Moore, I was told you were a strong mayor and you killed this project." I said, "Who told you that?" He said, "The people that hired me." So the people that hired you are in the room. Would you two be willing to tell me who told you that?
I respectfully, we haven't called them up as witnesses.
Do what?
We have not called them up as witnesses.
I know that, I'm just asking a question. Well, it was testimony, he was told by the people that hired him that I killed this project. I'm just trying to get to the bottom line, who put that out wrongfully about me. Thank you.
I have a comment, I just feel like, you know, there was this issue out there that we all knew about, that heard, that there might be title issues and/or, uh, restrictions that were on the land. And nobody presented, you know, if it's, if it's a nothing burger, why the applicant just give us the deed? I almost feel like, you know, you're hiding stuff from us. You know, I don't know how personally I can go forward and vote on it without knowing the answers to these questions. You know, maybe it's nothing, maybe it's something.
Any, anyone else from the board that would like to say something?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a comment. I think the applicant has, has heard the general, uh, has heard what the public has to say about this project. And yes, it appears that the, uh, the subdivision does comply with, uh, the requirements, or mostly complies, but I think that the applicant ought to take another look at this project. And, uh, you heard from Mayor Moore that said that he did not kill this, the prior discussions, and you heard the public say that we're against this. I mean, nobody has stood up and said, I'm for this project. I'd like to see the applicant take another look at this and see whether they could accommodate the, uh, the people who live here in Asbury Park, uh, with, is there another way to save that church? I, I understand you fellows are in here to make money, and I totally get that, but is there another way around it?
If I may add to your statement here, Jim, I, I agree with you in principle. Well, I think we have to agree that the application that has been brought before us conforms with the regulations. As we are guided by the law in this particular case, we can't, you know, I, I, we'll have to make whatever decision you, you decide is right according to the law. But, you know, I insinuated or said before that the master plan does have a significant number of aspirations in it that the current proposal we're looking at does not, does not do anything to get us towards. However, in the testimony, in the, in the, um, the document provided by Mr. Lincoln, there is some, you know, kind of, uh, whatever, working for his... by Mr. Lincoln, there is some, you know, kind of, wherever, looking for his statements regarding a previous proposal that included affordable housing and other components. This is all in the testimony we received from Mr. Lincoln. And it seems like, in the absence of seeing those things, all I can say is, "Oh, well, that sounds great. The church is being preserved, we get affordable housing, and there's these other things." I don't know any of the contours of that, those other proposals, but it seems like it's not just incumbent, it's not just incumbent on the applicant to take another look. There is a negotiation that has to take place if it's going to be something other than this, and that's not what we're here to hear. Like, you know, the, the governing body has to either decide that it's a deal that represents our needs or doesn't, and, and we are here to hear something different. I would love for them, I would love for this not to happen. This is, I'm sorry, I will speak directly to you. This is not what we want to see. This is not the outcome that is best for our community. It is not.
We understand. And I wanted to add before about not showing, you know, the allegations is, you know, we don't know if it's a private restriction or a government restriction for now. That's been thrown into the field, and I don't know how we, if a government restriction impacts us, I don't know how we vote, you know, to approve.
What, what is your thought about, like, where do we, I feel a little bit out of loss, like, we haven't seen the evidence, but we haven't not seen the evidence. So what is your legal opinion about the deed portions of these deliberations?
So my legal opinion is the applicant has an opportunity to present what they feel is appropriate for the board to make an informed decision. The board has to make its own determination, each of you individually, as to whether you think it's appropriate or not in order to move forward with a resolution. I'm not going to say what way that goes, but in order to move forward with a resolution if, if the applicant closes its case this evening. I can't tell you what way to go.
No, no.
Yes, you know, so I just want to be clear about that.
You've answered the question.
So they, they presented what they presented and it's sufficient for us to know?
You have to take the weight of the evidence that you heard this evening and determine your, your ultimate decision.
Can we request a copy of the, the deed restriction? Is it within our power to do that before we make a decision?
Well, I, I mean, you, you can. I think the applicant has, I think the applicant, other than summation, has closed its case in chief. It's up to them if they want to provide it to you or not.
But we couldn't determine whether it's binding or not, anyway?
Or we'd use some kind of ruling to determine whether it's governmental or just private?
Well, it does sound like, if I'm understanding what Mr. Beekman said, and please, I don't want to mistake this, is that each of us have to determine if the evidence that was presented is appropriate or enough for us to make a decision.
Correct.
And if we feel there's more evidence needed, we can ask for that. True?
Or if you're going to have a vote tonight, you can put on the record why you vote, you're voting the way that you're voting.
Okay. I think that's fair. I don't know, does anyone else have anything else they would like to say? Because I'll, I'll, I'll put it out there that my concern is that, that this, this deed restriction that's out there, I think that Daniel pretty, put it well, you know, it could be something, it could be nothing. And if we haven't seen it and we haven't received any testimony about it, I don't feel that I can make a decision. And if I have to vote yes or no, I would vote no. That's just me. Everyone else can do whatever they want, but I, I'm throwing that out there because I think it's very important for us to have all the evidence we need in order to make a decision.
May I have a seat?
Sure.
Thank you very much. So I understand that this board has uncertainty and lack clarity. What I would like to suggest to this board if we went to entertain, we would suggest that this board consider voting based on whether or not it satisfies the preliminary subdivision application with the understanding that we could not come back for final without providing the title. So you have an opportunity to review, review it and see if there were any quote-unquote restrictions to the site. That's what we would like to suggest before this board, because the applicant does have the burden to require, to satisfy all the ordinances required to maintain complete, which we did. We also provided to this board fully conforming preliminary subdivision application, which we did. But we'll also be more than happy to make sure this board has that assurance that they are not going to overall give final subdivision approval without first taking a look at that title to make sure that they feel comfortable acknowledging that there is no restrictions to this site for the proposed development that we have here tonight, which is simply only a subdivision. There is no other contemplated improvement here tonight.
But if the title, if there are all restrictions and the title says there are restrictions, is the title going to determine whether there are restrictions that bind us or not? In other words, whether there, whether there are personal, private restrictions or whether they're...
Governmental.
Governmental as proposed by Mr. DeSena. And so I don't know if a title, you know, and a title, you know, I've been involved in title cases where title attorneys were warned and they issued, and that's why they're called title insurers. So, you know, I, I don't know what, will that answer the ultimate question?
I, I have one other comment. I actually spoke with Michelle Alonso this morning. We only have one application on next week, although it's a rather large application. There's an opportunity to carry the matter one week, provide the information to the board as, and look, as far as the applicant's concerned, this is, this is your application. I'm not saying what you should do or should not do, I'm just throwing it out there. We could put you on the, our regular agenda next week, be carried with no notice required, and the board could perhaps get more information if the applicant was willing to do so.
May I have a five-minute recess in order to speak to my client?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Does anyone need to make a motion?
Yeah, let's see.
Can we make a motion to, for a five-minute recess?
Mr. Pasada? We're just going to make a motion to go into recess. All right, just so it's on the record. Have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Here.
James Benano?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Erica Lippo?
Here.
Dan? Scan, scan him out. Rick Lambert?
Here.
Barbara Kurzak?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you again for allowing us to have that second recess. We do appreciate it. I had an opportunity to speak to my client, and we would like to offer the opportunity, not opportunity, I should say, I apologize for saying that, we would like to offer the idea of coming back next week, adjourned this matter for the following hearing, provided that, number one, we'd be the first applicant, so we would know we'd have an opportunity to be heard by this board, and then number two, it would just be limited to the title review by your board attorney to confirm that there's no other type of quasi or minuscule restrictions to the site but for those setbacks that we had provided testimony to tonight.
I, I can't testify as a title expert. I can't, you know...
I understand.
We have to look at this from a title, some title expert that provides an opinion as to what this restriction may or may not be.
Is, is it, is it title deed, is, is a title, what kind of a person should review this?
Mr. Lincoln.
Why not?
It would, it would be a title, an attorney could provide an opinion, or a title company could provide an opinion, or someone who does, like, forensic title work, who might unnecessarily be a...
And, and is that something that the applicant should bring forward as, as evidence?
It's a public record. I, I, I think we can dispense of the, the 10-day requirement, considering all of the
testimony that there is something out there hypothetically.
So still, who would bring this title attorney or title person to the board?
I think the applicant is saying that they would provide the document and provide the evidence.
Okay, so that you would bring it, a, a party, a professional that does this for a living, and you'd bring it forward?
Well, let me ask a question of this board, because I do have this in my possession right now. We did request from our title agents to take a second look at the deed for our own benefits and make sure there was no restrictions. And her name is Amy Kirby, and she reviewed the title work, and I have her email right here where she confirms, or somewhere in my paperwork... Is she an attorney? No, she is not attorney, but she is a title officer with Prestige Title Agency, where she specifically says, will she specifically provide her analysis and conclusion? And if I may, I could provide this.
Well, I, I think, why, if, if you're going to agree to carry this and provide this testimony and she's willing to testify, I think you need to have her here to testify about her conclusions, because the public has the right to cross-examine her.
Sure.
Right, and we do law...
Obviously the board, yeah.
Right. Is there anything else that...
Are you agreeing to that?
The issue is, we've already had a conversation with her and asked her to come in to testify, and she had said that she would not come and testify, and that's why she provided this email. So we do not have the individual here to come and testify. I understand that she would have to be subject to cross-examination, so unfortunately, we could not admit her statement into evidence. But with that being said, it is our testimony here tonight that this is a fully conforming subdivision application and the restrictions for the site are related to setbacks. When we do submit rebuilding plans, we would have to show on those plans any restrictions covered, so restrictions are on there, and it would be, would have to be signed by the professional preparing those plans.
I still think that, personally, I mean, I don't know what everybody else on the board feels, that someone should be here to, so that the public can cross-examine.
Absolutely.
And we can cross-examine.
And, and not only that, I mean, I, I think there has to be an authoritative expert opinion on the deed restrictions.
That's what we're asking for.
Well, can I get a narrow scope of what the authoritative review you're looking for? Being specifically, is there another government agency? Or at some point did the government...
Well, of course, you know, the ultimate, the ultimate, you know, would be a court, right? We're not asking for that, listen, it's a suzer.
Sure.
About the deed restriction. So I mean, I think at least the title attorney who would come here and testify has to give a legal opinion as to these deed restrictions.
Understood.
And obviously, we, we will need a copy of the deed itself that would be, whoever will be testifying.
Sure. Absolutely. It'll probably be an attorney from my office that I'll have to do the deed and provide testimony and his analysis or her analysis.
And they are experienced in title issues?
Yes, I'll make sure that they're an expert. It will not be a lame statement.
While we're here, is there anything else that we would like the applicant to bring forward next Monday? While we're here?
Would we get it Monday or would, would we get something Friday?
I, I could see too that you guys get it by the end of the day Thursday, so it's a global 48 hours before and for open...
That's fine.
That's fine.
That works.
The only thing we ask for is, again, is that we're first on the agenda, and that it's limited just to this title issue itself, as we won't be bringing back our witnesses.
Right, and just so that we're also clear, is that the way that the, the planning board meetings work is that we usually have two applications, and each one gets an hour and a half, and hopefully you can be done in an hour and a half.
So you will be presenting, what, the deed itself? Is there going to just be oral testimony from your colleague or is an affidavit or any sort of...
It will have to be, it'll have to be oral testimony provided. As far as the, the board, the only thing, we don't need a report ahead of time, we just need the deed ahead of time, so it's part of the record, at least 48 hours in advance. And the attorney or whoever counsel and his client retains will provide their, their opinion.
Can I ask a procedural question?
No, I'm sorry, not from the public, I'm sorry.
I just want to know if the objector's case is going to be opened if you're opening his case? Because that would seem very unfair. He finished, you said the objector's finished, then if you're opening his, you have to open the objector's case.
There was no objector.
There was no objector's case.
Well, his case is closed. If you're opening his...
That's true, but there was no objector's case. Is there now an objector's case?
Well, if he's going to have new evidence, you need to open up their case.
That's fine, but, that's fine, but the thing is, is there was no objector's case.
Right.
Now, if there is a new objector's case, we should know that there is one.
Well, well...
Will there be one? Will there be an attorney present?
Give me the opportunity to say yes, because you're opening, you had closed this proceeding.
That's not, that's not the point. The point is, is that I'm making the point that says there was no objector's case today.
Right.
Are you saying there's an objector's case tomorrow on, on Monday?
Saying they should have the opportunity...
Absolutely. Bring it on.
To, to address the new testimony.
Yes, to, to, right, to address the new testimony. Only the testimony...
It will be limited to any new testimony.
But, but not just cross. If they want to put forth their own expert, you're opening up their case to do it, you should open up the objector's.
No, it's going to be limited to the title review itself.
Right, the title review itself.
Nothing else.
And if they want to bring their own expert on the title review, they should have the opportunity to do that.
They would have the opportunity to do that.
They would have the opportunity to do that.
The testimony.
That, that's, that's a choice they made. Nobody did that.
No.
Okay.
Do we do a motion to carry?
Just, let's, let me just, I, I want to make sure that the applicant has everything that they need to know for next Monday. Does anybody here on the planning board want any other information from our applicant for Monday? Any other information that they need? And if not, then I will make a motion, I don't hear anything, then I will make a motion to carry this application to July 25th to be the first one on, could be the first or the second, it doesn't really matter, it's an hour and a half, no matter how you look at it.
They want to go home.
If you want to go home, that's fine. We can, we can put you in on the first slot, that's no, no big deal.
That's impossible.
We can do that, and, and with no further notice.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
The regular scheduled meeting.
Regular scheduled meeting. It's a normally scheduled meeting, seven o'clock.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So just to be clear, the meeting will be carried until seven o'clock, Monday, July 25th.
They will be one of two applicants for that day.
And, and counsel, you had indicated at the last hearing that you agreed to extend the time to the end of July, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close. Aye. Aye.
Good point.
Meeting adjourned. We voted, we voted Jeff. We voted adjourned.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, meeting's over. All in favor?
Aye.[1772.26]